Thank you very much. I call today's special meeting to order at 5:01. Mr. Z, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I have an announcement. Welcome to our meeting today. Thank you for taking the time to join us. As part of the CNUSD COVID-19 Prevention Plan, we require that face masks be worn properly at all times, even when addressing the board during public comment. Face masks should cover the mouth and nose. Persons not wearing proper face coverings indoors pose a risk to others. Anyone who refuses to properly wear a face mask will be escorted out of the meeting. Thank you very much. Next announcement, happy belated birthday to our own Elizabeth Merkeen. Okay. Do we have any public comments? Okay, no public comments for the board, the special meeting. So that takes us to Dr. Simon for presentation to the board.
Thank you, President Pollock and esteemed board. We appreciate the time today. We have two presentations for you this evening. The first one is an update and progress report on the Corona Norco Unified School District's draft strategic plan. And then also, the second presentation will be our LCAP presentation for your review. Tonight, we have Moss Adams team with us, and they are going to be walking, doing a walkthrough through our strategic plan. And as you recall, back in Jan, back in December, Dr. Benostro had made a commitment to the board during his 100, first 100 days was to conduct a strategic plan, and that journey began in January. And we are almost at the tail end of this experience. We're almost there. And tonight, Annie Rose and her team would like to give you an update and progress report. It is my pleasure to introduce Annie Marie, or excuse me, Annie Rose and the Moss Adams team, and they will begin their presentation. Thank you.
We're connecting at the moment. One moment.
Okay, thank you. We'll just kind of hang out here and... Centennial won in baseball. Awesome. And Roosevelt is tied in the bottom of the seventh. Corona won, and we're waiting for a Norco update, so I would give play-by-play while we're waiting, but I'm not Vin Scully. Dr. Goins, any update? Thank you, sir. We had a great week with Corona Girls Wrestling, Centennial Boys Basketball and Girls Basketball, Santiago Girls and Boys Soccer, played incredibly well, but didn't quite pull it out.
Yes. Oh, boy, right here we go. Well, good afternoon. Mark Staranka, I am a partner with Moss Adams, so good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you. I lead our Strategy Technology and Operations Practice, and I'm joined by Colleen Rosellis, who's a director, and Annie Rose Favreau, who's a manager. And we're the team that worked with you, and Colleen and Annie Rose are going to walk you through our presentation, which is your draft plan. I just wanted to share, the district has really been a pleasure to work with. From day one, you were super engaged and organized, and probably one of the more efficient planning processes we've gone through. So just wanted to thank you for that, and I'm going to hand it over to Colleen to take it away.
All right. Annie Rose, are you ready to share that presentation?
I am ready, but I need to be given permission to do such a thing. So if the meeting host could give me that permission, I will share away. Great. Can you see the screen?
All right, here we go. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, and we're so happy to be here tonight. We're going to be reviewing the draft strategic plan with you, and like Mark said, we're really pleased to share with you the results. A really months of work and collaboration with you all, with staff and leadership in the district, as well as with the community that went into shaping the plan. So tonight, we're going to go over the strategic plan itself. We'll talk about the project and the process and where we are. We'll talk about the plan, and then we'll talk about kind of next steps and how we'll plan to implement. Mark, do you want to do just a little bit of an intro about who we are and the firm before we get started?
Sure. So Moss Adams, a regional advisory firm. We have the distinct pleasure of getting to work with lots of local governments in this regard. That includes cities and counties, school districts, and other types of special purpose districts. So our practice, you know, up and down the West Coast, I'd say the vast majority of our clients are in California. And I think actually, we're a referral to you from the city of Corona, where we recently finished strategic planning. So this is one of the services and practice areas that we really enjoy, because it's helping you to articulate, you know, your mission, your vision, your aspirations for serving your community and your students, and that's our role to help facilitate that process and make sure that you develop a plan that's actionable and is going to guide you in achieving, you know, what you're trying to accomplish. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. So I'll just go through a little bit of the strategic plan. Some of this is, are things that we have covered when we've met before, but it's always good to have a little bit of a refresher, especially in the context of now we're going to see the actual contents of the plan. So it'll be good to share. So Annie Rose, would you mind advancing? There we go. All right. So, so here we are with a five-year strategic plan. And the goal, the purpose of the plan is really, we're identifying our major priorities, and then we're creating this clear path of how we're going to achieve those goals. And so you'll see in the plan, we've got our overarching mission and vision and values for the district, and then we have the goals that we've established and how we want to actually support those. We've also identified performance measures, so we're talking about how we're actually going to come back to you and say, here's how we're measuring and monitoring progress. One thing that we really wanted to note is that having a strategic plan in place and having a good strategic plan that's measurable, that's up to date, is really a hallmark of a high-functioning organization. You know, not every school district has a strategic plan. Many school districts have strategic plans that got totally thrown out the window this past year. So it really is a huge kudos to you and really congratulations to the board and the district in doing this. It's a huge step toward your long-term success as an organization and the health and the strength of your district to really take a step and do this. And when I think back to starting this project in January, students were remote learning. Things were really different. I really want to commend the district and the board for taking on this work, for pausing when we had work sessions and interviews and thinking about incorporating our lessons learned from this really strange and hard time from the superintendent's search, really taking on all the significant community input that you've had over the last couple of years, and taking this moment to collect all of that information and look forward positively and say, where do we want to go in the next five years and how are we going to get there? That's something that not all districts are able to do and accomplish, and it's a huge step for you to be able to do that. And we're not just saying that to say that. It really is, you know, like Mark said, we work with hundreds of local governments every year, and it really does put you right in that top 10%. So great job for really doing that. And now I'll stop complimenting you, and we'll get to the meat of the stuff. So, so let's talk about what the board's role in this is. So your job is to set the vision and policy direction for the district. And so that means participating in developing the plan and then approving the strategic plan. That also means providing oversight as the district makes progress on the plan. So as district staff comes back to you and provides progress reports, provides those performance measures, asking questions, right, providing that oversight, reading those and making sure, okay, does this make sense? Are we actually in alignment with our mission and vision? Are the choices we're making in alignment with our values? Are we achieving our goals? And if we're not, right, if the progress that we're reporting is not getting to where we want us to go, why not? And can we adjust? And then a really important role is also that connection to the community. So sharing the goals and progress with the community. This is what we said we would do, and this is what we're doing, and this is the progress that we're making. A strategic plan is a really great tool for communication and for accountability with the public. So in terms of our approach to input, I know we've covered this with you before, but we took a multi-pronged approach to input. So we took advantage of all of the public input that you have done with your students and families over the past couple of years in terms of both the superintendent's search and all of the COVID response that you have done. And we're able to really leverage a lot of the community outreach that you have done as part of our information gathering for the plan. We also did our own community surveys and outreach and focus groups for the plan as well. We also did quite a bit of work with district staff, management, and teachers, and then worked with you all. And we did these in kind of multiple touchpoints and multiple times throughout the plan to make sure that we were on the right track. And milestones. So we started this project, like I said, in January, and we're right here, almost at the end. So you all are here in purple. We were last here in February to have our work session with mission, vision, and values. And now we're here to share the whole draft plan with you, and hopefully, we'll be back in a couple of weeks to adopt the full plan. We will be doing a community open house later on this week to share the full plan with the community as well. And last up, so just a little bit more into those input opportunities. So with respect to students and families, so like I said, we took a look at all of the previous outreach that you had done. We've met with the parent advisory committee. We also did a community survey to get that input on high-level mission, vision, values, and goals, and to get that, their input on what direction should we be going in? Where do you see the district going and being in the future? Online survey to get public comment on the full plan, and then our community open house, which is Thursday night. With staff and with teachers, we've done multiple work sessions with the management team to gather input and refine the plan content. We've done interviews and focus groups with management, with principals, with the association representatives. And then we also conducted an all-employee survey. We got a great response rate to that all-employee survey as well. And that provided a ton of really good input that helped us to shape the plan. And then finally, with all of you, so we interviewed all of you individually. We held that work session back in February, and we have gotten individual input from you in terms of the goals, objectives, and actions, and we're here to do the work session to review the plan. So we've had lots of opportunities for all of you and many members of the community to directly shape this plan and make sure that lots of folks are represented here. And as part of your role as on the board, we definitely want to make sure that the folks that have elected you and that you are represented are represented in the plan. So as you're reviewing the plan, please use that as one of your lenses as we move forward. Annie Rose, over to you.
Great. Thank you so much. So we wanted to walk through, I know you all have copies of the full strategic plan draft, but we wanted to walk through and sort of highlight some of the key points that went into the plan and tell you a little bit more about where some of these ideas came from. So as Colleen mentioned, within a strategic plan, we have a couple different elements here, and it's really grounded in your mission, vision, and value statements. So we're going to go through those first. Those are the sort of most foundational pieces of the plan. They really provide the framework for the rest of the work that goes into this. In terms of saying, you know, if we're evaluating, should this be a goal, should this be an activity or an objective? We can look against it and say, okay, does this align with our mission? Does this, will this help us achieve our vision? And is this work that can happen in alignment with our values as a group and how we want to work together? So that's a really key and critical piece. So we spent quite a bit of time shaping mission, vision, and value statements. We'll also talk about the strategic goals. These are the big picture, broad goal areas, the priorities for the district. And then within each one of those goal areas, we have much more specific objectives. And then in the plan, we also have specific activities that we have called out that can be done to achieve those objectives. And then finally, we have the performance measures. How are we actually measuring whether we're making progress towards our goals and progress towards the outcomes that we've said we want to see here? So when we're thinking about vision, this is our big-picture vision for the future of the district. What do we ultimately want to see? And here we have, our vision is that every student has the skills and resilience to thrive in a diverse global community. Some of this language will be familiar to you. The idea of thriving in a diverse global community comes directly out of some of your previous mission and vision statements. And we wanted to really hone in here on the idea of skills and resilience. Skills are all of the things that the students are actually getting in classrooms that are going to prepare them for their future after they graduate from the district. So preparing them for future careers, preparing them for going to college, all of those sort of hard and soft skills that we want to see being developed for our students. And then resilience really speaks to how are we creating students who have an attitude of being able to go out and tackle challenges head-on? And we know that this is very critical. The world can be a challenging place for many, and so having resilience to be able to say, yes, I have capacity, I have internal capability to go out and do the things that I need to do to be sort of a successful human being. And we know that so many of the efforts that are listed in this plan really speak to both of these areas. How are we making sure that there's really fantastic opportunities for academic achievement and skills? And how are we creating a safe and supportive learning environment so that students can be developing that sense of resilience and motivation? Our mission, so this is how we're actually going to accomplish that big-picture vision. Our mission is to provide high-quality education to meet each student's academic, social, and emotional needs. And to accomplish this, we will employ well-trained staff, promote family and community involvement, and create a safe and supportive learning environment. The things I want to call out here, in pretty much every conversation we had, these elements in terms of making sure we have really high-quality, excellent staff supporting our students, recognizing the really critical role that families play in this, and then thinking through how to create this safe and supportive learning environment. These are themes that came up again and again in the conversations that we had and the survey results that we saw. So we felt like it was pretty important to actively call those out in our mission statement. And then finally, our values. These are things that we are striving to be. Some of these are values that we, well, many of these are values that we already live by on a day-to-day basis as part of the district community. Some of these are a little bit more aspirational, things that we want to be able to do as we move forward. But the most critical one is really saying, we need to center our students in every conversation. Student needs and safety need to be front and center every time we pretty much talk about anything. And so that's why students first is that top value there. We also have accountable, collaborative, inclusive, innovative, and aligned. One of the ones I wanted to call out here was collaborative. This idea that, you know, strong relationships, interpersonal relationships are so critical within the district. And I will say that that's something that really stuck out to us as we were going through this work, is that you do have a really fantastic, healthy work environment within the district, based on the feedback that we got from staff and management. And that's fantastic to see, that people are really valuing each other as human beings and trying to approach this work with empathy and respect. It's not something that we see with every organization that we work with, and that is something that really stuck out to us as part of this work. And then the last one on here that I wanted to highlight was this idea of alignment. As members of a unified school system, we want to be thinking, how can we, you know, coordinate and collaborate? It's not just individual schools. We're really thinking holistically. How can we come together to make really strategic decisions? And to make sure that we're using our resources wisely for our current students and for our future students so that we can have a really sustainable future as well. So those were mission, vision, values.
Annie Rose?
Oh, yes.
I think we had a comment or two from our board.
We, yeah, we have some questions if we can take them. Elizabeth?
Yes, I'd like to go back to the accountable. I'm not happy when we say we will do something, we will do it. I think that's more on the trust side. So what I'd like to see, we act with integrity, comma, honesty, and trust that we will complete the projects that we have put forward. So some other way of saying that, because that doesn't, not all the time do things happen the way we want to happen. Like in the middle of the pandemic, we had to change a lot of plans. So we don't know what's out there in the future. So we cannot say 100% that when we say we do something, we'll do it, but we'll have to go back and talk to the community, talk to the students, and go on another way. But I think trust is a bigger issue there when we talk about accountability. So I'd like to see that embedded there instead.
If I may just add one thing, and I forgot to mention it early, and I apologize for that. One of the things we wanted to ask the board is if you have any edits, if you can make note of that, make sure that I or Avita receives a copy. You can send it in an email or hard copy, and we'll make sure the Moss Adams team receives that, so those adjustments can be made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Simon, and thank you for that comment. What it sounds like is that we want to maintain the idea of accountability, but also recognize that as things change, we may need to be flexible as well, and so potentially looking at some of that language to make sure that that's taken into account. Great. All right. Well, I'm going to move us forward, but please continue if you have other questions or thoughts that come up as we're going through. We'd love to hear them, and we'll also have time at the end to have those as well. Okay, so our strategic goal areas, there were four really big-picture goals that came up here. And the top two, academic excellence and student well-being. These were by far and away the highest priorities in every conversation that we had. And it was really interesting to see this sort of mirrored again and again and again when we did the internal staff survey. Academic excellence was number one, and student well-being was number two when we did the community survey. That's how these came out as well. And in our interviews, again, repeatedly, these were the two primary themes. And that was great to see that there was such alignment across the board around these themes and saying, yes, these, we want these to be our priorities. And then we have equity and effective governance here as well. And these, I think, we can almost think of as supportive pieces. These are some of the behind-the-scenes work that we need to do to make sure that our students can succeed academically and that they can have a sense of well-being within our school district. And so a lot of those two bottom goals are really some of that support work that we need to do to make sure that we're creating an environment where our students will succeed. So I'm going to go through each one of these. And under academic excellence, we had five different objectives, and they are more specific, and in the plan, you can see there are more specific actions under each one. But you'll see a lot of the objectives that are listed here really are in relation to the past year that we've had as a district in a lot of ways. We know that it has been a challenging year, and so the very first one here is saying, we want to be able to provide additional support to students and really close the opportunity gap that we're seeing. We want to make sure that every student has the opportunity to succeed here and to meet academic standards. The next one is around creating a consistent student experience, or at least a baseline. So this idea of fully implementing a multi-tiered system of supports so that regardless of which school you're in, you're going to receive a certain set of baseline services. But we also know that we want to continue learning and developing some of the really positive things that have come out of the last year in terms of flexible learning options. And so that's listed here, too. We want to build on the success that we've had and continue and move that forward into the future. Technology really falls into that same bucket. We've made great strides in the past year in terms of using education technology and just using hardware in order to get things done and get on our Zoom meetings and have those classroom experiences. And so we want to build on that and continue to push that forward. We don't want to go backwards. We want to, we want to create something new as we move forward. And then finally, family engagement. That has been so, so critical in the past year, as always. And so continuing to build this very strong relationship between staff and student families in order to support our students and the academic achievement there. Under student well-being, we have two primary objectives. And the first is around student mental health and really wanting to increase the proactive support that we're providing to students and the resources that we provide to students. And then student safety, making sure that we have a psychologically safe school community, a place where folks feel comfortable, welcome, included, and safe so that they can focus on their academics and on the things that they are learning every day.
Annie, we have a comment on the previous page.
Yeah, on page four. On page four, please. On page four, you say, continue efforts to expand. This is a bullet. On page four, you say, "Continue efforts to expand," this is a bullet, under B, under "consistent student experience." Here you say, "Continue efforts to expand career, technology, education programs with a focus on programs that culminate in certification or matriculate with dual enrollment." I probably need some clarification here, because I think the dual enrollment is a different program than CTE. And so I think this needs to be separated. Because not all students that are in dual enrollment are taking CTE. They're two tremendously beautiful, different programs, and we want to be honored that way.
Great, we can certainly clarify the language there. Thank you.
Okay, and then the other one is on E, family engagement. Bullet says, "Continue to partner with community and parent groups, including JCSD, YMCA, Parks Recreation, and the Parent Center." I think the Parent Center is not to be part of that group. Parent Center is funded by the district office, it is run by us, and yes, they are a great unit, they've been doing some wonderful things for our students, but it's not inclusive with the others. So if you can separate that out as well, please, I appreciate that.
Sure. And I think that the Parent Center had been included there as one of the primary means by which we're receiving input from parents and families, because we're getting a lot of information and data through that Parent Center. But it's certainly a different type of a group than the others, or a different type of organization than the others listed there. So we can certainly clarify that. Thank you.
And then underneath the performance indicators for academic excellence, I love all these bullets, but you need to add another one. We need to know the percent of students in biliteracy programs, and also in dual immersion, DLI. That is, that in all the graduation programs that we went through this last week, that was of high importance to the graduates. So we need to know that data.
So Annie, for purposes of being efficient, what we'll do is, I appreciate the comments from Mrs. Marroquin, she's going to share that with Dr. Simon, and we'll provide them to you.
Thank you.
Sounds great. And that would be fantastic if you have those types of, you know, specific edits or things that you'd like to have changed about the language, the easiest way to get that to us will be through those edits that we can coordinate with Dr. Simon. So thank you for that. All right, so we were on student well-being, we have the two objectives here. And then coming through to equity, and remembering that equity is really, as we're sort of conceptualizing it for the district, making sure that we're providing the resources to students that they need, knowing that different students have different needs. And in here, a lot of the themes in terms of what you'll see listed is really making sure that we have reviewed our internal processes to make sure that we are supporting equitable outcomes. And so that includes doing things like employee training, making sure that we even, as a district, all of our employees can speak the same language about what does equity mean? What does diversity mean? What does inclusion mean? And making sure that there's a very good, solid foundation there, thinking about our systems and processes, and how we may need to align some of them, or continue to align some of them, to make sure that they are really reflective of the district's values of inclusivity and diversity. Employee representation, you have a very diverse student body, and we want to make sure that the workforce is reflective of that diversity as well. Looking at the school curriculum, again, making sure that anything that is coming through the curriculum review process is in alignment with the district's value of inclusion and diversity. And then finally, digital divide, so making sure that we can continue our efforts that have been going on in the past year to close the digital divide, because we know that technology in connection to the internet is such a critical part of the learning process. And so these were five of the sort of high, biggest-picture items that came up when we talked about equity. And then finally, we have effective governance. And this, again, this is all sort of the backend stuff. How do we make sure that our house is in order so that we can provide the resources and the experiences we want to provide for students? So we have leadership collaboration here, making sure that there's a really fantastic connection and collaborative relationship between the board, the administration, and site-based management teams. Continuing work on employee engagement, financial stability of the district, and community engagement as well. And then the last two are really around infrastructure. How do we make sure our technology infrastructure and our physical buildings are in shape, well-maintained, and ready to support our students? So those are all of the sort of primary objectives that you're going to see in the report. As you know, there's a lot more detail in the draft itself, but I wanted to take a minute here and pause to see if there was any other big-picture questions about the report itself or the process that we've gone through to get to this point, if there's any comments from the group.
Yes, Annie, I have a couple. Big picture. Yeah. I emailed, I think Annie, I emailed you, and sent my two big picture. I think I read through our strategic plan, there's no mention of the word motivation. And I think, it might be old-fashioned, that's an old concept, but still very important. Current work in the area of engagement mentions the importance of motivation, because it's an internal intention to do something before engagement and achievement. There has to be motivation, and motivation is broken down into students feeling a sense of belonging. Definitely, if I don't feel I belong to the group, I'm not motivated to work. And if I feel my teachers or administrators are not trusting my competence that I will learn, I'm not going to be motivated to do work. Or if I'm not given the opportunity to honor my autonomy, my interest, you know, my likes and dislikes and so forth, it will impact my own internal intention to motivate, and that will have an impact on everything we're saying, on the engagement. So maybe somewhere there, somewhere in the detail, when you talk about inspire and all of that, maybe the word motivate or motivation should be included as a big picture. Yeah, the other, yeah, the other thing that I noticed, you know, when we pledge allegiance to the flag, we always say, "With liberty and justice, justice for all." That means all these things that we do, we are driven by our sense of justice for all. And so I think that's a big picture, has to be, to drive us to really implement what we say, liberty and justice for all, justice for all students. That will drive when we do equity, when we do family engagement, when, and all of this are driven by our sense of justice. So those are the only two big-picture concepts that I can see that can, that they're missing. And also, in our field, volumes of research, past and present, on motivation abound, as well as justice. You know, so educational justice, if we're scared of social justice, maybe educational justice is a better concept, which has also a lot of research support at this moment, so.
Great. Thank you so much for both of those comments.
The last page on effective governance, under letter M, leadership collaboration, I think we forgot a critical one, which is our associations. So it's the board, we mentioned administration, but our associations along with site-based management, I think that that would be important.
Great, thank you for that. And I know that's been a major conversation as we've been having interviews and some of our work sessions as well, really thinking about how are the associations, how are we strengthening our relationships there, making sure that those relationships are set up for success? So thank you, we can absolutely add that in. Any other comments or questions at this point?
Well, I'm going to send it to Dr. Simon, but since you asked, the word cognitive is missing, because we want our students, unless when we say academic, cognitive is involved. Because a lot of our students are getting the academic background, you know, the standards, focusing on standards. And because we take care of our kids, here in Coronanorco, we enrich their emotional being, we also enrich their social being, but they really need cognitive, thinking, critical thinking, and that's part of cognitive. I thought I, that's also a missing piece that I noticed with regards to what we want our students to be getting, affective, cognitive, social, academics, right? So that's a missing piece that I really noticed right away. I guess, oh, again, maybe it's a matter of what you're reading and what you're studying. When we talk about skills, the word skills, it sounds very behaviorist to me, and maybe a word is, a better word is disposition. Again, this is also research-based. People talk about disposition, and disposition involves the skills, the language, the habits, habits of mind. You know, we want our kids to have those good disposition, and those are driven by the skills they have. So maybe disposition is a more, a bigger term, but I, you know, but if you want to stick to skills, that's fine with me as well. I just wanted to say that disposition is more inclusive of what our student, what we want our students to learn, skills, resilience, doable, but I think this disposition, if you really, even teacher preparation has included disposition, because we are training teachers not just to have the skills, but the disposition to do well in those classrooms. So this, again, you can check out CCTC and so on, disposition is added as a mode of teaching and learning.
Thank you, Dr. Lala, I made note of that. Thank you.
Great. Well, then, if there aren't any other comments at this point, I'm going to move us forward to talk about sort of next steps to wrap up this first stage of the strategic planning process, and then move us into work planning. So, actually implementing a strategic plan, obviously that will begin with the adoption of the strategic plan, which will be hopefully coming up. But we also wanted to be thoughtful about, you know, we really want this plan to actively guide our work. We don't want it to sit on a shelf somewhere, we want it to be something that is actively referenced by leadership, by management, by staff, being able to really remember what is our mission, vision, and values? What are we doing here, and what are our goals for this year? And so when we're thinking through next steps, in order to wrap out this phase of work, we are continuing to gather final community input at this time. And so as Colleen mentioned earlier, we have a community open house, a virtual community open house, that will be coming up on June 10th, where we will be actively asking for input from the community. And we currently have an online survey open right now that will be, I believe, open until June 13th as well. So we'll be gathering those last pieces, seeing what else needs to come in, obviously getting the feedback that's come from you all as part of this conversation, and incorporating that into the finalized plan. We'll be bringing that back to this group on June 22nd for adoption at that point. And then based on that, what we typically see done is that a district will take the strategic plan and then create an annual work plan every year. And that, for that work plan, you will look through the full strategic plan, look through all of the objectives and the actions, and figure out which of these actions do we want to tackle in the next year? What do we want to prioritize for this year? Knowing that the strategic plan really outlines five full years of work. In this case, you'll also be in that work plan incorporating some of the elements from the LCAP, which we'll be talking about very shortly. So you'll see that in that work plan, that will be both pulled from the activities in the strategic plan, and then some from the LCAP as well. And then that work plan can really set the direction for what are we going to accomplish in the next year, and what will the management team be reporting back to this group on, in terms of the progress and the goals that they've established for that following year. So that's typically how that works in terms of our next steps. And so this, I think, is the official endpoint of us talking about the strategic plan. And what I'm going to do is just give one more slide here to give you a bit of a preview as we move the meeting forward into the discussion of the LCAP. Because we knew that today we were going to be talking about both of these plans, and sometimes it can be a little confusing in terms of how are these meant to relate to each other, or how should we think about them? And so before I hand it over, I just wanted to give this visual. So looking at the five-year strategic plan, we really see this as the umbrella planning document, under which there may be multiple other planning efforts and projects that take place. But I think, you know, of some language that we've been using so far is that the five-year strategic plan is really your roadmap for where you are going in the next five years. And then you'll have multiple vehicles in order to get you where you want to go, and one of those vehicles will be the LCAP, this equity plan. And so this is just one planning effort that will sort of roll up into and support the five-year strategic plan and the goals that are articulated there. So I just wanted to give you this visual before we move off into talking about the LCAP altogether. But with that, I think that will be the final piece that our group is going to share today. Please let us know if there's anything else that we can answer before we hop off the call.
Any additional questions from the board? No? Cabinet?
Thank you so much, Mr. Pollak and board, for your support in this process. We're really, we're really excited about the work that we've accomplished thus far, and we're going to segue now into the LCAP. And the beauty of this is both, both documents represent numerous individuals engaged in providing input. And you're going to see the alignment between the two documents, which really speaks to the consistency of our district as well as our community. And I just want to compliment Sharla, Dr. Sharla Capps, for her leadership in conducting the process of our LCAP plan, and she is going to take it over now.
Good evening, President Pollak, board members, members of the executive cabinet, and our guests. I'm very happy to be able to be here today to share with you our draft 2122 LCAP. We share this with connection to the strategic plan, and I love the analogy that the strategic plan is really our roadmap, the district's roadmap, and that the LCAP is one of those vehicles to achieving, or getting to our destination and achieving our goals. I think it's a great, it's a great visual. Oops. So quickly, just to share that the LCAP is our district's equity plan, and it outlines the actions and expenditures for CNUSD's supplemental LCAP funding, or LCFF funding. CSBA, on their website, shares that LCAP by design is based on equity, transparency, and accountability, and the local governing board authority. Now, LCFF distributes that funding to school districts in a manner that grants local communities greater autonomy to customize the educational program offerings in purposeful ways for the entire student population in general. But specifically, those actions and services are targeted principally for those students who are English learners, low-income families, and those who are foster youth. And so you'll see that we have very strong intentional alignment to the strategic plan in our draft LCAP. Just as a matter of reminder for the levels of funding for LCFF, all districts receive the base funding, and that's based on grade spans, and then there's additional adjustments for K3 and 912. That's the equality for all districts. If you start to look at that equitable additional funding, that comes in the form of supplemental funding for those students who are unduplicated. Again, unduplicated refers to those students who are low-income, foster youth, or English learners, and they're only counted once, which is why we consider them unduplicated. We receive 20% additional of our base funding for that. And on top of that, we receive, the state provides concentration funding for districts who have unduplicated counts above 55%, which is a large sum of money. It's important to note that Coronanorco does not receive concentration funding. In fact, we're one of In fact, we're one of three districts within the Inland Empire that do not receive that, us, along with Temescal Valley, Temecula Valley, and Murrieta. So similarly, engagement is critical to the LCAP development. We have an LCAP advisory team that meets. We meet multiple times throughout the year. That LCAP advisory committee is comprised of our community members that represent all of our stakeholders, or all of our unduplicated groups. It incorporates our teachers, our classified staff, and administration from both the site and the district. We also make sure that we get feedback from our students. And this year, we were able to speak virtually to our intermediate students and our high school students. We also want feedback from our parent advisory groups. And we always meet with our DLEC parents as well as our superintendent's parent advisory group for that feedback on strengths and needs. Additionally, the community feedback that we received this year was through the strategic plan community survey. A lot of surveys going out, so we wanted to utilize that. But we do want to share that beginning tomorrow morning, this will be posted as the strategic plan is for public comment. And we really value the public's input on that. So we encourage them to, to give us their feedback and you as well. It's a lengthy document, as you know, I gave you a hard copy. I always like to look at it in print. And so that very large document is the LCAP, if you'd like to look through it that way or online. And just like the strategic plan can provide your input as well. This is a really wordy document, and it's not intended for me to go through it. But it's provided for your reference so that you can see some of the specific input that was provided by the LCAP advisory, our students, our parent advisory groups, and our community survey. But what's really nice, if the stars really aligned, as Moss Adams and Annie Rose shared, the input that she heard consistently over and over from her groups, and we heard it as well through our groups, were two key areas. And that was that need and that desire for high academic excellence as well as that social, emotional support and mental health. We heard it time and time again. It manifests itself in different ways with, with making sure that we continue those innovative practices and maintaining the technological one-to-one devices, continued use of technology, and those academic supports for students who may have unfinished learning. So looking at the LCAP overview, just like the strategic plan, we can look at multiple levels. And that's in the designing of goals. And those goals are developed based on our identified needs. So we look at both data that's qualitative and quantitative to develop those identified needs and, and develop our goals. As Annie said, those outcomes, those student outcomes, where we want to be are critically important as well. We set baseline data, and then we set that, that plan for where we hope to be. This is a three-year plan in '23 and '24 with some roadmark, roadmap progress monitoring along the way to make sure that we need to, if we need to make any changes or course correct. The LCAP is unique in that every year it is reviewed and revised. So those, those progress monitoring steps are very important. And then we develop the actions and services that are most effective in meeting the needs of those students at risk and to achieve our ultimate goals. In the past, we've had six goals in Corona Norco. But we often bucketed those into groups of three, where we had academic goals with both the base program and closing the achievement gap. We had two goals with career technical education. And we had two goals that focused on student wellness and engagement. This year, we've brought those goals down for the LCAP to three key goals. Goal one, academic excellence, as we've heard from all of our stakeholders and in alignment with our strategic plan, college and career readiness, and student safety and well-being. I want to share with you a little bit more in-depth on those actions and services and those goals. And for brevity, I'm going to align those to a few of those objectives that were outlined in the strategic plan. So goal one, as we said, is academic excellence to ensure that all students have opportunities to achieve at a high level of academic success. We're looking at two of those key factors. There were five under, under goal one in the strategic plan. Looking at the opportunity gap, we have several actions and services within the LCAP that address specifically the opportunity gap. I do want to note that several of these touch on multiple other areas and objectives within the strategic plan as well. But under the opportunity gap, professional developments, instructional coaching for both within our English learners, our ed tech in math and in literacy, intervention teachers on special assignment housed at our elementary schools. We currently plan to have intervention specialists housed at 12 of our elementary schools this year with an ultimate goal, a three-year plan to roll out a half-time support person to every elementary school. Induction support for new teachers is critically important as we look to build that capacity of our new teachers. Summer school, we're thrilled to say, is offered this year at all levels, TK through 12. Supplemental supports for at-risk students, that illustrates itself through dollars that we provide to the individual school sites. Because just like local control funding for the district is unique for each district, we know that each site has different needs for their students as well. So this way, they have dollars to look at programs to ensure that they have students motivated and engaged in their learning as well as being able to provide those academic supports for any students who may need those. Our Avid program is alive and well. And as you know, we have that from the elementary through high school levels as well. And then we have literacy and math supports for interventions. The other area I wanted to focus on was technology. We are thrilled, as a non-concentration district, to be able to stand before you and say, we are a one-to-one district. It was incredibly clear from our community that they loved the fact that we're one-to-one and have a desire to remain that way, as we do as well. So professional development will be very key in that, making sure that, that we change the way we instruct. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job this year in adjusting their instruction. And we know they're going to continue to build on that as we return to in-person learning full-time in the fall. So professional development in using it for, for creation rather than consumption. Instructional technology, there are a few goals in the LCAP to ensure that we have software for all of our students and our teachers to use, that they've been using currently. As well as hardware, we make sure that we have a refresh plan for classroom computers so that they know, they don't have a computer in their classroom that is any older than five years. It will also provide that refresh plan to maintain that one-to-one device for our students. It also includes some instructional or, some, some tech, IT techs to support all of these technology devices. And site champions, which are our lead teachers in technology. With technology everywhere, we're going to, we're going to put the support right at the school and provide those extra hours for those tech leads at the school site. Goal two is college and career readiness. And we want to provide every student the knowledge and skills needed to obtain a post-secondary education, enter the workforce, and compete in the global economy. Now, the alignment for this falls into three different areas. The opportunity gap, consistent student experience, and flexible learning options. Highlighting just a couple, that we have AP and IB supports. Again, looking at our unduplicated students, we want to make sure that we have representation of all students in our highest-level classes. And in doing that, this may be a new class that they haven't taken before. We want to provide those supports for them as well. It also includes dual enrollment, some of those additional programs for school connectedness like Puente and Imoja. And then the large component of this goal is CTE. And making sure that we have rich programs throughout all of our secondary sites. And I know they've been working at, trying to encourage this at our elementary levels as well. Goal three is student wellness, student safety and well-being, is to provide all students the tools, resources, and supports they need to manage their mental health challenges and be safe physically and emotionally. These fall under two areas that we're going to highlight, or actually three, because student mental health and safety are two goals, or two objectives within the strategic plan. And family engagement, which is under goal one, but will be in our LCAP goal three. So we have social, emotional, character education programs, and we continue to support those at all of our sites. You've heard quite a bit about our multi-tiered systems of support. And those are being rolled out to a high degree across the district, and you'll be hearing more about those. Counselors at all elementary and middle and high schools are supported through the LCAP. And as well as steps, aides, additional school nurses, RAP services. And our parent center as well does quite a bit of work with mental health and engagement for our parents as well. In family engagement, our communications department does a fabulous job. And as Annie Rose said, communication and family connectedness has never been more important, as it has been this year through the pandemic. So our parent center increasing that family, community, and school partnership through the parent center continues to be a strong goal of ours within the LCAP. Looking forward for next steps, very similar to the strategic plan, we are gathering our final community input through that survey that will launch tomorrow morning. It will be open through tomorrow, through the 17th. And at that time, we'll make sure that we take all of those revisions and inputs. And we will be bringing to you on the 22nd, the final LCAP for your approval. We will work closely with the work teams in the strategic plan to continue to keep these connected and to monitor the program. And I want to say that we're going to continue the work because the LCAP is a continuous program. It's an ongoing cycle, and so that work will, will continue, but in connection with our strategic plan. And with that, questions?
Yes. Will we be hiring more IT techs to cover all of the staff at the 52 schools?
We have several IT techs within the plan. And I think at this point, that is-
Several in plan and hiring more, is that what?
We don't currently have additional techs hired in the plan for this year. There are several that are funded through LCAP currently. I know that there is, in conjunction, an IT plan being written. And so that would probably be incorporated within that IT plan.
Because?
I can jump in. So we're working closely with Ben Udiho to, he presented to you a couple times, a couple board meetings ago. So we were able to input the equipment into the LCAP. Now we're working on staffing next because he's looking at how we're going to divide all the pieces together. And we have an online inventory system as well for the devices. So we're evaluating the work, and then we'll incorporate that probably as we go into the school year. So it's not in the budget yet, but there's placeholders. So we don't have, knowing how many specifically, but we know it's a need, and we're working on that.
Okay, because we get a lot of teacher complaints about not having enough staff, or when they're called, it takes a while to get to them, so.
Yeah, that's definitely on our list, so we're working on it.
Thank you for the update. I appreciate the fact that we try to blend the strategic plan with the LCAP. But we also have to keep in mind that we have that one-time funding. And with that one-time funding, we can start some of these programs. But by having grant writers, as many as we can possibly acquire, will help us in making sure we sustain these programs, like additional people to help with the IT and additional people to help with the, going back to the programs where we need to help the kids get back on track. So please keep that in consideration. Yes, it's good to have these programs, but how long are we going to be able to sustain them? Because that money will be gone in two years. So keep that in the back of our minds.
Yes, thank you.
I have a quick comment, real quick. On LCAP III, the family engagement, and the second bullet point, family, community, and school partnerships. Do we have somebody in the district who, their specific responsibility is to be community outreach, to develop the partnerships? I know that, you know, each department kind of has that. And Dr. Bunrostro is the district representative. But somebody whose key job is to develop these relationships with different, different parts of our community and, and build those up. And do we have somebody at this point?
Cassandra Willis at the parent center is the director that oversees. And one of her visions is to really strengthen those community partnerships. And so that, that would be the key person.
Okay. I just want that to expand with our, you know, whether it's CTE, not necessarily the parent center, but CTE, develop these, you know, mentorships, internships, these relationships, adopt to schools, those type of things. I really want to see that. And we've talked about it, but I don't see it, I guess, at the level that I would like to see it. I mean, I really want our students to go through our schools here, graduate from our schools, go to college, and want to come back to this city. And I think, you know, getting hired by, by people within the community is a start. And so I don't know what we have or if we could expand upon that.
And Dr. Bossdrew through CTE also has very strong community connections and actually has Lenny Bailey, who works very closely with those community partnerships as well.
Yeah, I was just going to say the exact same thing. But in addition to that, executive cabinet and cabinet members, all of them are assigned to different, like Lisa Simon and I sit on the YMCA board. Sam sits on several different, I think, the Corona Chamber, the Heritage, all of them. So really, our networking is actually, I totally understand what you're saying, and I agree with it, but we're really out there in just about every niche.
Right, and I see that, and I understand that. I just, we need a quarterback or a coach who oversees that. And, and that's what, I don't know if we have. Because I know a lot of people are doing things. But we need that.
Yeah, multi-division, multi-school approach right now. My suggestion, recommendation, President Pollak, is when we, this stuff is great for our board retreat. And that could potentially be an area that the board identifies at our board retreat. And then, of course, we will prioritize that as well and incorporate that. But I do like the idea quite a bit, the, kind of going back to the accountability piece of it. So I like it.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Well, I have a couple. One, you know, when I, when I look at the strategic plan that we just saw earlier, I think we, they really did a good job. I think I like the way they gathered all the information and give us the strategic plan. I think I'm, I'm pretty sold with the, with the plan. Now, when we get to ours, in terms of alignment, it aligns with the big picture as well, you know, because it's all in the LCAP. I just wanted to say, you know, for the sake of the public, that our LCFF is already an equity approach, right, in schooling kids. That's one. And then we're paying attention to, to make sure that our LCAP are also equitable in its approach. It's not going to be labeled some other way. This is an equity approach to, to schooling kids. But one that is noticeable for me is the word opportunity gap. I like it. It's an explanation to why we have achievement gap. But how do you measure opportunity gap? Are we saying some kids have more opportunity than others? How do you measure that? I think when we talk about achievement gap, which is not here, we used to have that. But, but we jump into analysis, we jump into opportunity gap, which is, which is, to me, is really a more philosophical, social problem. Because achievement gap is measured by test scores. They take the S back, and we really see the gap for the last 15 years. And that's when we are able to identify who the students are and not talk about generality, right? Because when you talk about opportunity gap, what does that mean? Who have more opportunity than others? How do we measure that? And I think for that to be in our plan, it needs to be really spelled out. And I know what you're, I know what you're thinking. You're analyzing, because achievement gap is not really achievement. It's really more opportunity. That's the analysis of why we have achievement gap. But to really take it out there, because that's the most quantitative measurable factor that we have. Why do we have achievement gap? Well, look at the test scores and who are achieving and who are not. Then if we can show to ourselves and to our community that the gap, and here's probably the dirty word, right? Is driven by race, always. African-American, Latinos on top, and Filipinos third. And then Hispanic and African-American at the bottom. That is really the truth, and that is really happening. And that's the achievement gap that we are talking about. And that's why we want equity. We want to make sure that if you're, if the other kids are not provided- We want to make sure that if you're, if the other kids are not provided the same opportunity as the others, that's when our schooling comes in, and that's where the program comes in. I like it, but we're just missing the data, the show. Because if I'm a community person, is there really a gap? What does that mean? Does my neighbor have better opportunity than me? Or do I have better opportunity than the others? How do I measure that? So that's one thing, that I think achievement gap is quantitative, clear, there it is. We can tell the community there's really the achievement gap. That's what we're talking about. And the way we analyze it, it's maybe opportunity gap, which we need to define, right? Because there's health gap, too. When you start talking about a more qualitative term like opportunity gap, then some people will say, health gap, you know, disproportionately, who got affected by COVID. So maybe there's health gap. So then we go on and on on those qualitative measures. You know, so I just thought, it caught my attention right away. But I'm with you, I'm not disagreeing with what I'm seeing on paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Sam.
And that concludes both our presentations. Mr. Pollak and the board, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, so we're going to move to closing ceremony. Do I have a motion and a second to adjourn our special meeting? Okay, and a second. Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, none opposed? Okay, so our special board meeting is closed at 6:08. We're going to go right into our study session. I will call to order our study session at 6:09, and we are going to move into closed session, and we will be back shortly.
I want to call the open session of our study session at 7:31. Ms. Barra, can you say the pledge for us?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Before we get started, I just have a quick announcement. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Again, we appreciate your patience as we were in closed session. As part of the CNUSD COVID-19 Prevention Plan, we require that face masks be worn properly at all times, even when addressing the board during public comment. Face masks should cover the mouth and the nose. Persons not wearing proper face coverings indoors pose a risk to others. Anyone who refuses to properly wear a face mask will be escorted out of the meeting. Thank you so much. All right. We had a busy closed session, and I want to report. In closed session, by a unanimous vote, the board took action to approve the following management reclassifications. Leah Byrne to elementary school principal, Temescal Valley Elementary. And -- Be prepared, there's a lot. Anne Marie Cortez to elementary school principal, site to be determined. Tracy Payne to administrative director, business services. Melissa Elwood to administrative director, business services. And Deanna Yakobowski to high school assistant principal, site to be determined. And I apologize if I said your name wrong. Glenn.
Thank you, President Pollock. It is always a great day when we make these recommendations and we appoint new administrators to the CNUSD family. Really excited to introduce them. I know there's a number of family members here, and it's great because, you know, as a family member, you are also part of the CNUSD family. So I'll begin with Ivy Yule Eldridge back here. She's going to be the new principal at Eastville Elementary. She's kind of returning home, started there as a teacher. So congratulations, Ivy. Sure, and you have some family to introduce?
I do. I'm missing my son.
Congratulations. Excellent. And we have Leah Byrne over here. She's going to be taking the place of the fabulous Beth Feaster, who is retiring. We are super excited, Leah, that you're joining us as the new principal at Temescal Valley.
Thank you. So I thought we'd meet my fabulous husband Ryan and my daughter Delilah. She's a student in our district and will be going into sixth grade. I've got my mother and father, twice in a very, so I'm super excited. So blessed to have this opportunity. I'm a product of this district, lived here obviously my entire life, have been blessed to get to be with the fabulous administrators following the success of Beth Feaster. I can't wait to continue the philosophy over at Temescal and to support the community. So thank you.
And, of course, the wonderful Anne Marie Cortez. She doesn't know her site yet, but she's going to be an amazing elementary principal wherever we get her.
Thank you. I have my lovely family that's here. So my mom is here, my brother is here, my son, this is Anthony, and Noah, and the person who I would 1,000% not, I mean, I couldn't do anything without my partner, which is husband in the back. And then I do have to recognize, the principal who hired me is here. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, CNUSD. I am so, so excited. The principal I'm working with is here. Everyone is so supportive, and I'm so lucky to be here, and I can't wait to find out where I'm at and just make it happen.
Excellent. Wonderful. And Deanna Yakobowski is here, I know. She's going to be an AP at high school. Not sure of the site yet, but when we find it, you'll be off and running, for sure.
It will be the right match.
Yes.
So I want to thank everybody. High school students, still --
Wonderful. And we have, rounding out our appointments tonight, our two administrative directors in business. I think they're quickly taking shape as the dynamic duo. We are really excited. Melissa Elwood comes to us from Riverside recently, but she's been with us for the past few months. So congratulations, Melissa.
Thank you. I'm honored and excited. Can't wait.
Excellent. And no stranger to these meetings over this past year, the amazing Tracy Payne. We are super excited with taking over as a new director.
Thank you. I'm very excited. Melissa and I look forward to what's to come. I would like to introduce my husband, Steve Payne. So we can be sure without all that support at home to allow for all the extra hours and time. So I'm glad to be part of this family.
Excellent. That's right. Congratulations.
Well, again, congratulations, everyone. Really, it's been a culmination of an exciting couple of weeks with promotions and graduations, in-person high school graduations. It was awesome. And the hard work that everybody's done. New administrators, business services, old principals. Mr. Raschnau was my son, both my sons' principals at Stallings. It's so good to see Mr. and Mrs. Raschnau. So just so much excitement. And so congratulations to everybody. And again, thank you for the patience for waiting for this celebration. Oh, sports updates. Corona baseball won in the playoffs, so they're going to go in the semis. Roosevelt and Norco softball won. They're in opposite brackets, so they're playing. Corona girls wrestling plays in the, wrestles in the CIF finals tomorrow. Norco lacrosse boys won the CIF championship yesterday. Centennial girls basketball plays Thursday against Mater Dei for the championship, and the boys play Friday at Sierra Canyon for the CIF championship. And Corona boys baseball won, and we haven't heard on Centennial boys. They played today. So, and then Santiago girls and boys soccer, they made it to the regional finals. Unfortunately, both had tough losses, but we're so proud of them as well. So great to see everything going on. And then band concerts, choir concerts. We're getting back to normal, and we love it. So, okay. Now we have some public hearings. So bear with me. First one. The public hearing is now open on the proposed 2021-22 through 2023-24 Revised District Local Control Accountability Plan, the LCAP, which describes for the school district goals and specific actions to achieve those goals for all pupils and each subgroup of pupils identified in ed code such in 52052. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education on this item may do so now. Okay, the public hearing on the proposed 2021-22 through 2324 LCAP is now closed. The item will return to the board for consideration and approval at the board meeting on June 22nd, 2021. Next, the 2021-22 budget for the Corona North Unified School District will be presented at the June 22nd board meeting. As advertised in the press enterprise, the proposed budget has been available for public inspection in the business services office until the present date. The public hearing is now open on the 2021-22 district budget. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education regarding this item may do so now. The public hearing is now closed regarding the 2021-22 budget reserves. Thank you very much. Okay, next, public comment. We have no cards tonight. So we will move on to the presentation to the board. Alan Giles.
Thank you, President Pollock. Good evening, board. Superintendent Warren Rostow, Executive Cabinet. Usually Tim Carty, with our financial advisor from Piper Sandler, comes and does these. Tim was not available tonight, so you're stuck with me. Anyways, as the board knows, we've recently had a couple of large transactions of some refinancing of some of our CFD bonds. So tonight, I just wanted to share with you the results of those two transactions so that you're aware of what actually happened. So let's first talk about CFD, Community Facilities District 98-1. This CFD was established in the 2000s. Ten years ago, reached its built-out status. That means all the homes were built, sold, completely developed. Consists of 3,364 single-family residential units in that CFD. At the end of your presentation, the last two pages, there are maps so that you can see where these CFDs are located within our district. So if you want to look at those, that'll give you an idea where those are located, at those CFDs. So the good news is, a little bit ago, we went out to refinance these bonds. We refinanced almost $34 million of bonds, and they were rated AA because the district has a great credit rating, not only in our financials, but also in the market with Fitch, Standards &amp; Poor's, Moody's. All the major credit rating agencies across the country give us very high marks for our financial status. And so as a result, we were able to reduce the interest rate on these bonds from 4.85% to 1.97%. Significant reduction, which allowed us to generate over $7 million over the next 12 years for our facilities, capital facilities program. And so our annual revenue for these bonds went up over half a million dollars. And so over the next 12 years, the capital facilities department, which Mr. John Vandrischka heads up for the district, will receive about $7 million over the next 12 years, an additional capital facilities dollars that we wouldn't have had had we not completed this transaction. In addition, because of the lowering of the interest rate, which lowered the liability for the district, there was a reserve fund that we were able to liquidate, and we have about $429,000 that will also come back to the district, to our capital facilities program as a result of liquidating that investment fund, so that reserve fund. So this was a really great transaction for the district. Again, that $7 million, I'm sure, will be used, knowing how much our sites are used, and as they age, will be used to maintain the quality facilities that we have throughout our district. So, great transaction there. Let's talk next about the -- Let's talk next about the PFA, the Public Financing Authority. We also did a refinancing of bonds for this CFD. This CFD is comprised of 12, it has 12 community facilities districts within it. So it's called the Public Financing Authority. And you can see those CFD listed there. Again, there's a map at the back of your presentation, which shows you where those CFDs are located. And this CFD is made up, this Public Financing Authority, about just under 2,000 residential units, 1,866 single-family residential units. So how did this transaction go? Well, fantastic. We refinanced about 30, just under $36 million of bonds. We went from almost a 5%, a 4.93% interest rate, down to very low twos, 2.14% on the new bonds. And what we were able to do was reduce the debt repayment obligation to all the homeowners within the CFDs by $7 million, which works out to about an average of $309 per year per taxpayer in these CFDs. So when they get their November tax bill, they're going to see that their tax on this, their Melrose tax, their special tax, will have gone down about $300 as a result of this single transaction. So again, another tremendous transaction for the district. One thing I'm really proud of that we do is when we have these opportunities, we really track, with Tim Cardy, we really track the market and see what we have available that we could refinance based on what the market conditions are. And our staff, John, Dahlia, do a tremendous job of making sure that when these opportunities arise, we get in the game really quick. And as you can see, because of that, we experienced some significant benefits, not only to our district, but to our community as well. So again, it's just a matter of being proactive to seizing the moment when it's there, not procrastinating. A lot of districts will procrastinate. And, well, maybe it'll go down. But when it's where it's at, you need to take advantage, and we do. And I think that's a testament to the work that's done throughout our district. Here's the maps. I told you, we're in the back, so you can see exactly where those CFDs are located. And all in all, two great transactions. One that benefits our district for years to come and one that benefits our community for years to come as well. So all I have for you tonight. Dr. Lawson, do you have a question? I saw you adjusting your mic, so I thought you might have a question for me.
I just wanted you to tell us your prediction of the future. Where do we go from here?
Where do we go from here? Wow.
With Dahlia taking care of that.
Oh, yeah. And Dahlia has been part of all of these transactions we've done. And I will tell you, over the last five years, the number of refinancing of existing bonds we've done, both CFD bonds as well as general obligation bonds, like Measure GG bonds, every one's been a home run. And I believe the issuances we've done, Series B and Series C, we've just hit the market at the right times. And all of this really benefits the district in many different ways. And so having this flow of ongoing revenues coming into our capital facilities program is critical to maintaining our facilities to the level that we expect them to be maintained at. So again, it's just been, we've been, I don't want to say lucky because we watch this stuff. It's not like we just sit and wait for the sky to fall. We track it, we watch it, we see what we have that can be refinanced. And when it is available and the opportunity is there, we seize the moment and we get it done. So good news. Dahlia's been in every one of these transactions. You're going to be just fine. That's all I have. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the reserve fund, the money to fix the older schools, right?
The reserve fund? Well, it goes into the capital facilities program to fix whatever needs are there in the facilities program.
But it's for the older schools, not the new schools, right? Older schools, like my trusty area, Corona, Vicentia, well, Jefferson and Garrettson, they have their up. But the schools that really need a lot of new wood put in, paint, different things like that.
Yeah, we always try to address the greatest needs first. So I mean, it's not earmarked that way, but obviously, all of these dollars are used to make sure that whatever the needs are, wherever the needs are, that those needs are taken care of. So I know I didn't, I know I didn't answer it, but I can't say that it's going to go to the oldest school because if we have a major pipe break or something at one of our newer schools or a roof, we've got to take care of that, even though it may not be an old facility.
So the older schools, where is the money going to be coming to fix the problems at the older schools is what I need to know? Because I'm getting a lot of calls from parents, from, there's so much stuff that's needed, like Rainey, Vicentia. You know, some of these schools are old. Corona High, 125 years old.
Right.
And there's a lot of things that need to be done at these schools. And I'm getting hit a lot by these parents because they don't know where this money is at or how it's going to be shoveled around. They just want to know, when is my school going to get fixed?
Yeah, so keep in mind, there's about $90 million of Measure GG money still to be issued, which once we get Corona Fundamental completed and Washington Elementary completed, which should be completed next year, maybe before the start of the '22 school year. Then there's that next batch of Measure GG dollars that still need to be issued, Series D, which is about $90 million. So that money will be used. If you look at this first bullet under benefits of refinancing, there's almost $600,000 additional money that would be coming into the capital facilities program over the next 12 years. So that money will be available, along with developer fees. We just had a meeting today with a company, a group, that's going to do a development down in Temescal Valley. I think it's going to generate a little over $1 million in, 4 million? 1.4 million in CFD dollars. So that money, so all that money is pooled together in our capital facilities program to make sure that we are taking care of the needs of every school, every school we have in the district.
So I was told that the GG money is only on whatever was planned already. So that money cannot be used to fix the old buildings.
Well, some of those old schools are in the Measure GG plan. Like Corona High School, I believe in Measure GG, there's like $18 million that's earmarked for Corona High School later down the road when that last issuance is made. So some of those schools are in Measure GG, so in that case, some of that money would be used for those. The schools that aren't in GG, then that would be the capital facilities dollars that we're talking about here that would be used for the needs at those schools. Does that make sense? Yeah. Yeah, so we have, which is about roughly, I don't know, 18, just under $18 million a year that we have.
Dahlia, could you repeat that into the mic, just in case people?
I think Ms. Ibarra is talking about some of the repairs. So some of those repairs can, if they're smaller in scale, they can come out of our routine maintenance. So we have to contribute 3% of our budget into restricted routine maintenance, which is about that 18 million that Alan's mentioning. Obviously, it pays for our staff, our trades folks, and so on, but there's projects that they tackle each year. It could be HVAC projects, roofing projects, some other types of routine maintenance. And then the bigger projects, the modernization is what Alan's referring to from capital.
And just to clarify, Ms. Ibarra, the three schools that you mentioned, Corona, Rainey, and Vicentia, our folks have been walking the schools, identifying the project list, and those schools are set for repairs that are coming up this summer?
I was like, the project is going to start because the emails don't stop. We, if we don't ask here at a board meeting, parents don't hear, when is this? If we don't ask at a board meeting, the parents don't know. They are sending emails and emails and emails wanting to know, when is their school going to get fixed? So I'm not doing my job because their schools are not getting fixed. I don't have a date. I don't know what you guys are talking to, the principals, or whoever has to decide who's first, who's last, right? So we need, I would like to see some kind of update at these meetings. And saying, what, okay, so in two months or in two years from now, just let us know when Vicentia is going to get fixed, when Rainey is going to get fixed, whatever school. I'm not just saying my school, because I get calls from other schools, too. But right now, I'm talking about my trusty area, that I'm getting a lot. Okay, so I need some help here because I really want to know. I feel like I'm in the dark. I don't know when these repairs are going to get made. I asked one person, they said, no, the GG money is already put to whatever. And now I'm getting, well, there's going to be GG money down the road. So I just need some communication here.
Any other questions?
Yes, I just, I just want to thank you, Alan, and your team for bringing these issues up and showing how we're giving back to the community. I appreciate that. I know the taxpayers also appreciate that, that you're being wise, distribution of the monies that are coming to the district and out. I also, just to tag on with Mary, when we visit these schools and we go to these competitions, and I sit on a bleacher and I'm getting splinters in my rump, you know, I just want to know, those are kind of things that we really need to look at. You know, so not only the inside, but also the outside, too. Because the weather beating and they're used a lot, and our teams are winning, and we want to show them some appreciation. But thank you, Alan. Thank you for your team. You guys have done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I want to echo Elizabeth, Alan, and John, and Dahlia, and anybody else on the team that I missed. Thank you.
There's a lot of them.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you guys very much for the cost savings and look forward to seeing how we're able to utilize this within our district. So, but thank you very much for the hard work, John back there, and Dahlia, and Alan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You missed a spot. Okay, consent items. Are there any questions, comments, or highlights on any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent items? Okay, Mary and Elizabeth, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, none. So consent items pass 5-0. Okay, on to closing ceremony. Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting? Okay, was that John and Dr. Lawson, second? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed, none. So the meeting is adjourned at 7:59. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great night. Be safe.